We've gotten the affirmative.
We're good? Okay, sorry, thank you. I'm so sorry, Libby, for interrupting.
No, 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 no. I just wanted to be clear because I thought we were looking at zoning within the 300 feet of this right-of-way. You're talking about the entire city.
That's going to stay, but we want to cover those districts throughout the city. If they're not within that, we want to make it clear that those are a part of the architectural control.
This would be an expansion of the ARB?
It would be an expansion, but as Thomas said, we by practice been subjecting B2 to the Architectural Review, the Architectural Control District, really based in large part upon this first part that Thomas read, 11.3 Tac 1.
The intent is there, but it's not explicit. It's not clear in the filing section, and that's what we want to do.
Because right now, just to clarify, right now, the jurisdiction of the ARB is basically the With Creek Corridor and the Victory Corridor.
Well, not necessarily Victory at all. It is because of the Village Commercial and the General Commercial, but not Victory. There's no right-of-way language for Victory Boulevard, but it is because those are currently, you know, zoned in what is called out in the article. And like I say, all we want to do is make this part of the code match our practice, and that's really it.
Did the last project that we entertained go before the ARB?
It did. It did. Because it was a B2 district, and it was within, and it was within the 300 feet. But if it was outside of it, would we have still made them go? Yes. That's how we've practiced. It's the intent of the article, but it's not clear.
I was just wondering, what criteria the ARB uses for, you know, for any design of a building or the exterior?
They have criteria. They have guidelines.
Established by who?
Themselves.
By themselves?
Yeah.
Board of how many?
ARB guidelines.
A board of how many?
I think we have five members of the ARB.
Five people can decide whether they like it or not like it. Is that correct? Is there real written guidelines?
They have written guidelines and policies, and some even allow administrative review and approval in certain cases. But, you know, this conversation isn't necessarily about the jurisdiction. It's more about where their jurisdiction is, not necessarily, you know, how they function or, you know, the parameters for how they approve things. But they do, they did consider the money storage right before your meeting in November.
Are any of these buildings grandfathered by this? Like, you mentioned Owens Marina. You know, Owens Marina, let's say that operations were to be sold, as an example. The building is what it is right there with the pier, and it is what it is, and somebody buys it, and they just want to operate it now for a restaurant, and it hasn't been operated as a restaurant now for several, well, I don't know how many years, but I think it's been over a year.
Right.
It makes me wonder what kind of constraints this five-member board would want to put on a place like Owens that has been there forever, just like it is, and somebody wants to come in and open up a restaurant, maybe they just want to paint it. They don't want to have to do anything to it. So I'm trying to understand, what effect would the ARB have on a situation like that?
Well, I mean, again, that's not really the conversation, but I can tell you that the ARB's policy, you know, for repainting generally is, we have a palette. We have two color palettes about that thick with paint colors and schemes that they've previously approved. And if it is one of those, we can approve it administratively. If not, we would take it to the.
My question really was more, if someone wanted to do, you know, would the ARB come in and say, oh, you know, in order for you to open a restaurant up now, it's not just a matter of paint, you're going to have to put this kind of facade on it to make it look like we think it ought to look, facing the water, facing the road, facing the sides. I mean, would that be within their purview to do, to require when we do this? I can see in our, I can see going down our roads, you know, our entries and exits going through the city, but to put those kinds of constraints, like particularly down at Endo-Messick, all those buildings down at the Endo-Messick, Owens Marina, that area, and probably some others as well, it just makes me, you know, I'm reluctant to give that much authority.
They have that authority now.
Well, it's not in here, though.
And that's how, by practice, the code has been used for decades. But, you know, they regulate the exterior appearance, and, you know, really so long as people show that they're using materials of a permanent nature, they may recommend, you know, slight modifications, you know, but that's how that board has functioned since Dakota's been established.
Thomas, I do have to say, I think ever since I've been on the Planning Commission, it's always been presented, the With Creek Corridor, like, we would be shown maps that had the designation for the ARB district. I don't know if that's even on the GIS, but I remember always seeing maps. It might be in the comp plan, but seeing the specific, and it was never the waterfront commercial. It was always just the With Creek and Victory Boulevard.
Yeah, and that was probably showing you that 300-foot right-of-way line.
So is there?
With Creek to.
Well, to Yorktown Road.
Is there any history of the waterfront commercial going to the ARB? Like, did the Point barbecue?
Again, it's an overlay district, so the underlying districts are what really controls that. However, if there is concern with Owens Marina or with Messick Point, we could also, we could always include B2 within this particular area, not expand area per se, but list it as a specific use within this, you know, this gateway area. I mean, that's another way we can do it.
The Point.
Like, the Point you mentioned. Like I say, the intention, you know, was to be more specific in the language of how it's been applied, and, you know, we can, we're here to field your opinion and your suggestion, and we'll come back to you with a rewritten 11.3 Tac 2 per your recommendation. But it, you know, we're trying to clarify how the city's operated by practice for decades and what the ARB has historically considered.
So two questions. First, for the ARB, do they have, do businesses have additional application fee to go in front of the ARB?
It's a separate application. I do think there is, there may be a small fee. I'm not sure if there's a fee at all for the ARB.
If it is, it's like $25.
Yeah, it may be $10 or $25. It's not, it's not great.
And then, and you mentioned, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch on, so I mentioned if historically they have done things on the waterfront commercial or more towards, like, the eastern side of the city that may be spot-zoned. I don't know if there is spot zoning over there, but that is something that they have historically looked at, the ARB has.
They have historically looked at all commercial districts because it's been the intent of the article for a long time, and we just wanted to clarify it to include those districts.
And can I ask what brought this about?
Just, it's just unclear, and we wanted to make it more specific. You know, there's a little difference between specificity, and we wanted to make it clearer.
I'm sure a lot of our documents are like that, but I would like to ask Andy, just as a matter of legality, let's, and again, I'll use Messick Point as an example in the Point barbecue that just, because that had been dormant for a period of time, I don't know. But if it's not specifically in this document, could the ARB legally require them to make modifications if it's not specifically listed in here, just because by practice, you're saying that, you know, they're saying by practice, the ARB has always reviewed them, but legally, could they enforce it if it's not specific here?
Without looking at the history of it and diving into the code section, I can't give you a certain answer, but I would say if it were challenged by somebody, that may run into some issues.
I was just curious.
But that's part of why I think the city is trying to clarify this, to basically match what has always been done with what is specifically laid out in the code.
Okay, well, my concern was.
Because this has been general.
Right.
But traditionally, the ARB has reviewed all commercial buildings, whether technically it is included in their purview or not.
Right.
Just as a general policy they have for the entire city. Council and, or, you know, the staff is looking at trying to be more specific and to say, yes, it's not just the 300-foot right-of-way, it's all these zones, no matter where they are.
I just wondered, you know, what has precipitated this particular topic here, this particular section? Is there something going on that has caused this for y'all to look at this?
Simply to clarify the code. I mean, we recognized it probably last year, and, you know, again, I'll say, in where it reads, you know, the purposes of the article, it says, "It is the purpose of this article to provide for the designation of architectural control districts within land areas zone for business, comma, commercial, comma, research and development, and industrial areas." So it's very clear what the purpose of the article is, but we got more specific in the next section. So we want to clarify the specificity to include the business and commercial districts that it says is the purpose of the article and the section before.
I guess the question is, is that the ARB has control over all the business districts in Pecosa already, and now we're kind of singling out 300 feet of our business district, main business district, and not the rest. I mean, that's kind of interesting that it's 300 feet. I mean, what it sounds to me like we're only worried about the 300 feet along Main Road there, but really, the ARB controls all the districts and all the areas.
That's a valid point, and, you know, if we want to make it, change it so that it reads, you know, all commercial districts and do away with the 300-foot right-of-way, that is something I would certainly, you know, be acceptable to. You know, what if someone is, it's B2, it's off With Creek, but it's 420 feet away, you know, and that's where we go back? Well, it's obviously the purpose, it's obviously the intent. And since I've been here, you know, we haven't had an issue with that or taking anyone to ARB, but this is a, really more of a housekeeping thing than it is changing someone's authority or purview. Just making one section of the code match the other, which, as you all know, we've been working on for a couple of years now and continue to work on through this year.
Well, this has been educational for me. I did not know that they reviewed other properties that weren't along the gateway of the city. So this is nothing else. This is enlightening to me, for sure.
Well, we brought it to you for, you know, suggestions and related to, you know, kind of advance the discussion and initiate, you know, an amendment so that we can, we can clarify the language in 11.3 Tac 2.
So this is not just for new construction, that is for existing dwellers?
We would not take an existing structure to the Architectural Review Board unless it was to be redeveloped, repainted out of, outside of the palette they've approved. If the sign didn't meet the policy for which it could be approved, it wouldn't even go to ARB. And, you know, we have the authority administratively from them to approve such things. So more times than not, when people repaint or get a new sign, we review it administratively, and we provide them with the ARB guidelines and policies, and they ask their redevelopment, you know, to match the policies and guidelines ARB has set, and if it meets those and we determine that, it's approved. If it is outside of those guidelines and policies, then it would go to ARB.
Something being rehashed like that anyway would have to be.
Yeah, if it was a major redevelopment, it would have to be, you know, current code anyways, but, you know, if we're just talking about the exterior of the building, so long as it met the policies the ARB has now, and the, you know, the schemes and materials and those good things, we can approve it and house.
I was just concerned about all the buildings, like particularly down at Messick Point. There are a variety of buildings down there that.
This has never been a policing ordinance. This has never been, you know, we don't like your paint, you're going to the ARB. This is a.
But we don't like the front of your building.
Right.
We want you to put an overhang.
That's never, that is not their authority, and it never will, would be. Well, certainly, if more exists, it's. Yeah, that's all we want to do is clarify the code.
So what I'm hearing is that, in particular, the title of the section 11.3-2, the designation of Architectural Control Districts, and I think that might have been where my head was at previously, was the district was the gateway to the city. And now, basically, we're just saying, hey, it might be a little bit redundant from the 11.3-1, but the Architectural Control District is an A, its own business, commercial, research, development, B1, B2.
Right.
All of that.
Yeah.
Like I said, we're asking for a consensus of you all to initiate us amending this part to clarify and make it, marry it up with 11.3 Tac 1 and, you know, the city's practice. That's all right with you all. Initiate that, we'll bring it to you in a couple of months.
I have no problems with it. I understand what you're trying to do, and it's not a diminishing of ARB or anything Seems kind of, actually kind of redundant, but it makes no difference if you want that in there.
Yeah, we just want to make it, what's there clear? If it's clear, we want it, we want it clear and specific.
Bonnie?
I have no problem with that.
We will bring that to you most likely March 20th. I know we are close to your regular meeting time. We do want to ask, too, in line with the work we've been doing to update the code, many sections that you all worked on with us last year, if a consensus would initiate the, us amendments to the zoning ordinance as a whole, Wally, as, while he can speak on that a little more than I can.
I'll just make a few comments about that. We all know that our zoning needs to be at the hall, both for some vagaries in certain areas, and I think it's appropriate to take a look at it in light of, you know, our other plans. The way I pictured this is going is not like the site plan or subdivision where we basically looked at the entire document and said yea or nay. I want to do this kind of like y'all did the comprehensive plan, take it a section or article or two at a time, because we're going to need to look over this. Article 1 has a lot of tricky stuff, so we need to take some time to look at that. Article 2 and 3, nonconformities and BCA, that's pretty much state code-driven. I don't see a lot of differences that and that. And then maybe we look at the residential districts, then we start looking at the commercial districts, and we make sure that we're happy with our uses, and it also occurs to me that before the next meeting, I can bring some literature, some legal literature on how to look at special permits, what we call conditional use permits, you know, some of the parameters that are, that are in play there. But at this point, I don't have any specific language for you, but over the next year, I want to bring you texts for you, for your comments and your input. So I'm really just asking the Planning Commission to initiate that process, and if you do, then I will probably in March bring the first of the articles to you to take a look at. And of course, I'll get them out to you in advance so that you have a chance to actually look at them. And we could do a work session. I mean, you know, if the Planning Commission feels like we need to do a work session, we don't have any regular schedules scheduled for February, but if you wanted to do a work session in February, talk about it more, we could. We could also do it in March. So I certainly want to give everybody an adequate time to, and for your input. The zoning ordinance is, I think the subdivision ordinance is probably the most important because you're regulating the commodity, that is, the transfer of land, but zoning's got a lot in it. I mean, it's about a 300-page document, so there's a lot to look at. And I gave you a handout earlier, and I know we're running out of time, but just to remind you, I did give you a handout on the future land use, so just take a look at that if there are any questions. Certainly, we'd be more than happy to take them. Yeah, I think it was emailed, and Thomas was mentioning. Anyway, that's all I got. I'm sort of, you know, trying to finish up by 7 o'clock.
Yes. No, I think it would be really good to start initiating those discussions. I think the work session is a great venue to do that, where we can have just an informal discussion and talk it through.
Sure. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Any other comments, Doc? Can we wrap it up? All right. Well, without, we will go ahead. Does anybody need a break before we start the regular session? Okay. With that being said, then, I am going to go ahead and call to order the regular session of the Pecosa Planning Commission. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance and then for the invocation. If you would like to stand, we will say the Lord's Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. A kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our sins. As we remember this in our lives, we need to stand with your name, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, power, and the glory forever.
Next up, we have the approval of minutes. We have two sets. We have, first of all, the work session from December 5th of 2022. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes as written?
Oh, it's not here, so I can't.
If we have to abstain, are you saying both of you, you would like to abstain?
You don't, you don't have to abstain if you aren't here. I think it's a little different if you weren't a member of the board then, but if you were not here, that doesn't mean.
I think that we'll approve these minutes. Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Grable?
Aye.
Geisinger?
Abstain.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
All right. Next item is to approve the minutes of the regular session from December 5th of 2022. Does anybody have a motion to approve those as?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as written for the regular session of December 5th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger? Commissioner Grable? Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
We have an audience for visitors. This is a time for anybody in the audience to address the Planning Commission for any items that are not part of the public hearing. If there is anyone who would like to speak to the commission, now's your chance. Yes, and could you please state your name and your address, please?
Madam Chair?
Oh, it's this.
Would you like him to wait until the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. So you are, you were speaking for the conditional use permit or the part of the, yeah, if you don't mind, we will have a public hearing for the, for that as well. So this would be anything other than the public hearing items?
Okay.
But if you have.
Sit back down.
Yes, yes, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now, I'm going to go ahead and close the audience for visitors, and now we're going to move to the public hearing. The first one is a request for a conditional use permit by Caleb Howard for the operation of a storage yard to be located at 789 Pecosa Avenue, tax map parcel 19-1-135, Zoned R1, single-family residence, and Mr. Canella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you, as a conditional use permit application, it was requested by Caleb Howard, who's the property owner, and it's for the operation of a storage yard to be located at 789 Pecosa Avenue. The city code consideration is that storage yards are not a permitted use in the R1 single-family residence zoning district, which this property is. They're only permitted uses in the B2 business commercial district and the general commercial district. This was properly advertised and adjacent letters were sent. About the use per the application, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, quote, "to park approximately four work trucks, store material and existing structure." The existing structure is a garage at the rear of the property. The city code definition of a storage yard is as follows, "A yard area in which materials, equipment, and/or vehicle used for construction, excavating, freight, or similar activities are stored or kept. Storage yards may operate as a primary or an accessory use." The proposed site, 789 Pecosa Avenue, as I mentioned, is on the screen. It's the parcel in the middle, the former home of the Tom Hunt Store, and you can see in the rear of the property there, the existing garage. It lies between Regan's Motor Company and 789 and a half Pecosa Avenue. Comprehensive plan consideration for this application, the future land use designation is found in the comp plan, which you have a copy of the map in your presentation, is for low-density residential. Given the size and general dimensions of the lot, residential development may be challenging. Additionally, its proximity to lots which are currently zoned for B1 office professional or currently used as commercial lots should be considered as the future land use designation is limited business. So let me talk about this. It may be easier for you all to look at the screen, or in your packet, whichever you prefer, but the area we're talking about is, I'll say, in the middle of the map, just north of the large green area, what you see in pink. What you see in pink is the corner of Ren's Road and the buildings before that, the Z Center, across from the Z Center, the old bank building people refer to it as, which future land use designation is limited business. But if you hop to the other side of Ren's Road, you will see a small section that future land use is also limited business. Now, this application in particular, and I'll use this visual, the zoning in this area, I will say, is not necessarily consistent with the current uses. Reggins is zoned residential. The lot in consideration is zoned residential. The house across the street at the corner of Autumn Pecosin Avenue is zoned for business. The Reggins, I'll say, show lot, the car lot itself, is zoned for business. Now, all things considered, this lot obviously has not been used for really any purpose in a very, very long time. And the applicant purchased it, I believe, in, well, last year now. But here are the conditions for a storage yard if it were permitted by right in the B2 or general commercial district. I'll read through some of them specifically in just a second. But very important here is what I've bolded, and it is C, condition C, which reads, "For storage yards abutting a public or private street or a residential district, a 15-foot landscape buffer shall be maintained between any required method of screening and the property line, abutting the public or private street and/or residential district in accordance with Article 10, Section 8 of the ordinance." That's important to consider, especially for this application, because the Reggins lot is zoned residential. It would require a buffer, a 15-foot buffer. We know that that property has been a commercial use for 80 years, but the zoning is what it is. Now, there is, there are residences adjacent to this property on the three other sides where the buffer would be also required. So you can imagine that on a property as narrow as this, that 15-foot buffers on both sides may be challenging. So what we asked the applicant to do, and I'm kind of skipping around the slides a little bit, we told him that it would have to be screened. It would have to be fenced or screened appropriately per the ordinance. So our recommendation was to chat with your adjacent neighbors and ask them, basically their blessing, to screen the property, and by doing so, screen it on the property line, not with a 15-foot buffer. It would make the property impossible to use for the intended use. So, you can see the letter on your PowerPoint. I'll read it for you, and this is what the applicant circulated to his four adjacent neighbors, and it reads, "I, Caleb Howard, am asking the acceptance of my four surrounding neighbors to install a vinyl fence around the perimeter of the property at 789 Pecosin Avenue. I would like to utilize the existing fences installed by my neighbors that are on the perimeter of where our properties meet. In the instance, an existing fence is to fall or collapse. I agree to repair or replace the damaged section to keep the property enclosed, screened off. I'm asking for the permission of my neighbors below if they would accept a fence being installed where there is currently not one existing along the perimeter of the property. The display of their signature ratifies their acceptance of our request to put a fence on the perimeter of the property." You can see the four signatures below. So all things considered, we modified a bit the conditions of a storage yard, how they would read for the B2 or general commercial district, and I will read those for you now. And these are the conditions, some of the conditions, as recommended as part of this application. "The storage yard shall meet the following conditions. A, all site design standards shall be met," meaning what comes after that, the applicant has to do. "The storage yard is to be screened from public view on all sides by solid wood, vinyl, masonry fencing, or other material deemed appropriate by the zoning administrator, with a minimum height of six feet, but not to exceed eight feet. Evergreens or shrubbery suitable for the purpose of screening in pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the ordinance may also be used to meet the requirement. All required screening shall be continuously maintained in good condition to assure that its intended purpose is accomplished. This requirement may be waived by the zoning administrator based upon unique site conditions." C says that "a landscape buffer shall be provided in the front setback of the property, as shown in the proposed site plan, in accordance with Article 10, Section 8 of the ordinance." That is specific to this application and this site plan. This is the site plan presented with the application and to you all for consideration. And you can see in the front, nearest Pecosin Avenue, minus the area where he will use for access, he shows a proposed 15-foot landscape buffer, you know, which will be a well, a maintained 15-foot landscape bed. The recommended conditions continue to say, "For uses abutting residential districts," which this does, "No outdoor activity may be conducted between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Parking areas, if required, shall be surfaced in accordance with the city site plan ordinance. Storage yard areas shall be surfaced with a dust-free material. Material kept within the storage yard must be screened from public view in its entirety. Equipment and vehicles kept within the storage yard must be screened at 55% to be determined by height at the highest point. Vehicles and equipment kept within the storage yards must be kept in good repair and working condition. Abandoned and/or unlicensed vehicles or equipment will not be permitted. Materials used for fencing shall be of a natural wood or neutral earth tone color, as provided for in the Architectural Review Board's adopted color palette." Mentioned that in our work session. "And storage yards shall in no instance be located in a required front yard area and shall meet front yard setback requirements, which his proposed site plan accomplishes." The second recommended condition is that "if fencing or screening does not exist around the perimeter of the property, it shall be installed by the applicant. Fencing that currently exists between adjoining property owners may be utilized, but at such time it is damaged or removed shall be replaced by the applicant as indicated in the letter signed by adjacent property owners dated 11/18/2022." The third recommended condition is that "upon the issuance of a conditional use permit, prior to the operation of the storage yard, the applicant shall present a landscaping plan for the front buffer to community development staff to be approved by the zoning administrator. The landscape buffer shall be maintained in good condition." And then, the three conditions that you typically see for any conditional use permit This is the site plan, and I think the conditions are fairly self-explanatory, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Were there any responses by the neighbors or...
I...
To the letters?
There was not. I saw one of his neighbors who I know in public, and she made it a point to tell me that she did not have an issue with it and was going to call me, but then we ran into each other. Other than her, I've not heard from any adjacent property owner.
Is this building the one where the old barber shop used to be, or is that the one to its left?
To the left is the barber shop building, the one near Pecosin Avenue.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm. The building in the back of this property is a garage that's been there for a very long time. I don't think many people really paid much attention to it when the Tom Hunt Store was there, because it really didn't capture your attention and doesn't now. But that is the existing structure on the property.
So that view that you had up there, Thomas, that doesn't really show really the line where it is. How close to the salon does it... I almost said saloon.
That's a...
Changed the whole neighborhood right there, but...
That's a great question. The GIS is a little deceiving. The lot, the lot line is, it's a little larger than this would have you believe. And the best way I can explain it to you is that the left property line really runs right down the back of those cars or the edge of that paved parking lot to the ditch. So he has much more of that gravel access than the GIS shows.
The driveway is on the piece of property that he has?
It is.
And there is a gap between the out, the salon and where the fence would go?
There is. There would be a gap between where the fence would go and the salon. And I don't want to step away from the mic, but you can see at the bottom, I'll say, the bottom left corner of the site plan, you can see where it says asphalt, and that is the existing entrance. And, you know, we certainly wouldn't encourage anyone trespassing on another's property to gain access to yours, which is why we allowed Mr. Howard to show the entrance to the storage yard in the front, because there's really not room on the side for him to access it.
I guess my only comment would be on, and maybe this is a moot point, because maybe the existing fencing does already faulted this, but item I, where the materials used for fencing shall be of the wood, I would suggest possibly changing that to materials used for new fencing, in case the fencing that he does want to utilize is white or whatever other color it is matching.
That's what I was kind of curious about, too, is if he's going to replace the existing fencing. He's going to replace it as it is now instead of with the same material, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah. I think if it was, you know, a situation where, you know, speculating, but, you know, I think if it was a situation where it was the neighbor's fence who had fallen, and we're requiring the screening period, I think either him replacing that for them of the materials they have would be sufficient, or if he said, hey, you know, I'm not going to replace yours per se, I'm going to put up a new one along our property line. I think either would be sufficient. But if you, if you want to clarify that condition further, we certainly can. I think, I think how the condition reads, it would, and the other language that speaks to the required screening, it would probably allow for the existing fencing to be replaced in the same material or new, as he's proposed, vinyl.
One other thing I was kind of curious about, too, is the 6:00 AM.
Right.
Does he, I mean, if that's a seven-day-a-week kind of business, then that's something that we might want to address as well.
Right. I think that may be a question, you know, better geared for the applicant, but my understanding is, you know, there won't really be onsite work. He doesn't have equipment that's, you know, very loud. You know, it's stored for trucks, which should create no more noise leaving the storage yard than it would your neighbor's driveway.
With that, are there more questions for Thomas, or are you guys ready to open up the public hearing?
Yeah, it just says four trucks. Is that maximum number, or is it just what he wants to put back in there?
That was what he put on the application, speculating that's the equipment he has now. Obviously, the code allows for certain vehicles and materials to be stored, which, you know, per the code, he could do, but I think that's just speaking to the equipment he has now and what he wants to store there immediately.
Other questions for Thomas before we do that? Okay. With that being said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. So anybody who would like to come up and discuss, please do so, and just state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Howard. I live in town here, Avevedelia Lane, right off Little Florida. Never done one of these before, so I hope I come at the right angle here. Like I said, I am a resident here. Went to school here. Started school, finished school here, graduated 2012. You know, I call because of my home. This is where I'm currently raising my kids, and hope they finish school as well. I manage a company called Topstream Exterior. We do exterior maintenance, minor construction. I'm not a builder by any means, just, you know, home repair, but strictly exterior We currently reside in Yorktown, right off Production Drive, kind of near the Yorktown Walmart. We've been leasing a shop there. In April of 2022, I purchased 789 Pecosin Avenue in hopes of bringing our business to town. We would use the lot for truck parking and the existing structure for material storage for our jobs that we, you know, do. Quick answer to your question right now would be four trucks parked there, you know, overnight. You know, our typical work hours are eight to four, Monday through Friday, try not to work weekends, you know. So the 6:00 AM thing, you know, we could definitely, you know, respect and abide by it. I don't think any of my guys are going to come in at 6:00. So just kind of, you know, going over the lot, I mean, even though it shares a property line with Reggins Ford and has several, you know, surrounding commercial, or not commercial, business zone properties, the property itself, 789, is zoned, you know, residential. And I might be, you know, kind of saying the same thing as Thomas did, but, you know, with the zoning of the property, I require a conditional use permit. With the use of this permit, I'm required to screen off the property. Due to the size and the layout of the lot, it's difficult to exercise some of these landscape buffers when putting up a fence or screening, specifically the sides of the property. I realize that there's the front buffer, the landscape buffer, I think it's, I believe it's 60 feet from the center of the street. That's not an issue at all for us, and also, you know, respecting the landscape buffer up front. Where it gets tough on that property is the size, because it's a narrow, kind of long lot, and then you think about pulling trucks in, pulling trucks out. You bring in the size, and then it gets tight and tough to use. Honestly, the lot is tough in general for anything to be built or used, so... Let me see here, so the, talking about the fence on the side itself. So, I mean, basically with, along with, you know, possibly the grant or the permit, I'm asking that we could possibly be allowed to install a fence or screen on the property line, strictly on the sides. I have asked the permission of the four surrounding neighbors if they'd be okay with the fence, and they were, they did sign off on that, and so they had no issue with it. You know, some of them said, "I'd be fine if there wasn't a fence." But we're, you know, understood where I was at and what I was asking, and so they were okay with signing off on that. You know, there are existing fences on that property towards the back. The three neighbors in the back, so excluding Reggins, all have a fence that butts up to that property, and that existing fence is on the property line. So what we would kind of propose is to tie in to the existing fence, so there wasn't this awkward funky alleyway in between two fences. Basically, just continue the fence along the property line up to that 60-foot buffer from the center of the street. And like I said, I've talked to these neighbors. Actually, John, looking at the property to the right of me, just had a new fence installed within the past couple of weeks, a brand-new vinyl fence, and put it right on the property line again. So we would, you know, propose to just tie off... So we would, you know, propose to just tie off of that, get to our 60-foot mark, have our entrance to our, you know, property, you know, for use. You know, just kind of wrap this up. You know, it's a great opportunity for our small family business, take the next step, you know, become more established, you know, while also bringing our business, you know, to our hometown, you know, where I live at. I mean, that's pretty much all I got. You know, I appreciate you guys letting me talk tonight and, you know, having the opportunity to stand up here.
Any questions while, while we've got you up here? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming. And I appreciate the due diligence with the letters from the surrounding neighbors too. That's very helpful. Thank you. I have the same question as you about the 6:00 AM. I had circled that. You know, possibly we could make that, say, 7:00 AM or thereabouts. It sounds like that would probably be acceptable to the, to the applicant. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts about the conditions?
I kind of looked at the property as, even though it's residential in that particular area, there's so much commercial, including the lot, you know, the storage lot of, we're not really totally violating the residential part of it. The fact that it gets to be used is, is another thing. So I really don't see the condition where we're, I mean, we, we know we have a conditional use permit required because of the residential, but I don't see it as a impeding upon the residential nature of that particular stretch of the road.
And I think that the conditions are very comprehensive to make sure.
Very, very comprehensive.
And even though Riggins has grandfathered in, they're residential. They're owned, they're owned residential. And there's a full fledged garage there, so, in the back, that you don't often think about because you see the showroom.
Right.
But there's a big garage back there. So it's kind of, you know. Oh. Yeah, because it's, it's limited. That property really is limited. So I'm, I'm good with it. If there are no more questions.
I guess my only comment would be if, if we did want to make a change to seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the request, to pass it with the correction, with the, I would say the change in time from six, from eight, let's see, we, we said.
From 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM.
Seven, right. 6:00 AM to seven, from nine to. To seven. Yet to be clear, nine to 7:00 AM. And with that being the only change, everything else the same with the conditions that have been recommended, I would make a motion to accept it.
Second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger? Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you again. All right. The next item on the agenda is a, a public hearing for the proposed constrained capital improvements plan or the CCIP for fiscal year 2024 and beyond fiscal year 2028.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to steal your thunder. I will get with you on when council will hear that. But as far as tonight's concerned, you're good to go unless you really want to stay.
Yes, and I should say we are just a recommending body, so this is just a recommendation. City Council has a final approval. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I mentioned this in my email to you all with your materials. I'm going to ask you once again to continue that public hearing to March 20th, March 20th because we, we likely won't have a regular session in February. We are backstaffed full, so the CCIP, I got some revisions today and will continue working on that and hopefully get it to you at that March 20th meeting. But if your blessing, we could continue the public hearing to then be appreciated by staff.
And remind me, do we need to take a vote to postpone that till March? Is that a vote item?
I, you, you, we can take a recorded vote.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, if someone wants to make a motion in a second?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to postpone the constrained capital improvements plan agenda item until March.
March 20th. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Commissioner Gable?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger? Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of five to zero. All right, thank you for that. The discussion we had during the work session is exactly what the new business is. We will work on revisions to the architectural control district language. And, you know, for those viewing at home, I would just make the same comment I made during the work session, that that language is, just to clarify it with existing sections and, and city practice in general. So that we will probably bring to you March, March 20th as well. So March 20th will be a very busy meeting.
Great, and no other new business? And without being said, any communications and force comments?
I think the only thing that I would mention is that Joe Cachemilio is presenting the taxation for transient occupancy, which means that once that gets passed, assuming it gets passed by city council, we may follow the line with some tax changes for you guys to take a look at in the next several months in terms of transient occupancy. That's about it. Any questions to me that I can hopefully answer? I'll be happy to take them.
Any applications in the wings that, that you think are going to be coming?
No, still haven't received anything. And of course, as soon as we do, we'll let you know.
All right, but same comments today was the cutoff for applications for you all to consider in a public hearing at your February meeting. None were received, so, you know, we can work with, with you, Madam Chair, on that timeline for discussing zoning ordinance language, whether we do it in a work session in February or have a six o'clock work session before our, our March meeting.
What are your guys' thoughts? Do you want to skip February, have a work session? No, are we already going to be jam packed with a work session in March for the CCIP or for the other materials coming?
The CCIP, you know, won't, won't really take me long to cover. I mean, that's, I would say more of a formality than, than really anything. You know, I'm not just going to breeze through it, but I'm certainly not going to go through it page by page. So I don't think that'll take long. The architectural control district language will update as we discussed in our work session and bring that to you for your consideration. That shouldn't take long. And then that would give us.
Taurus Tom, possibly?
Taurus Tom, possibly.
Possibly.
And then, of course, we will begin conversation about our zoning order changes, which we can start that as, as, as Thomas indicated. As early as work session before February, just understand that's the only reason you all will meet that night is for the work session.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think what I'm hearing is have that work session in March or did I misunderstand?
In March at six.
Okay. Yeah, so March at six, we'll discuss zoning ordinance, CCIP, and the architectural control district. And that will be Monday, March 20th. President's Day was the February meeting.
Oh, yeah, that we shifted to Thursday, okay.
Right, okay.
Anything else? Okay. Bonnie?
Nothing.
Steve, do you have anything? Libby? Tom?
I have one of those ethics for the advisory commission.
I do too, yes.
So this, the gal that normally takes the stuff is not here. Can I hand it to you guys?
Sure, I can deliver it to the clerk.
Absolutely.
Is that where we turn them in when we fill them out?
You can bring them to our office or you can take them upstairs to either Kim Haley or, or Christie, City Clerk and a deputy clerk. But we are, we're happy to take them and get, turn them in for you too.
Thank you. That's it for me.
All right. Well, I just want to say welcome, Stephen. I'm so happy that you're here. I'm very excited that you're here. And so any questions, always call the office. They are very, very helpful, so.
Nice to have five votes tonight.
It is so nice, yes, yes. All right, well, with that being said, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.